Hey Jake.
Good afternoon. Trying to get Armand moved over into a panelist. There we go. I don't recall whether Rich will be joining us or not. But we can wait a minute. We do have a quorum. And I see Raphael is here to speak to the waterfront conditional use application, but I'm assuming that Philip is going to be joining us. There he is. And Scott and Emily are going to be presenting on the long range plan. So I see they're in attendance as well. So we should be able to get going here pretty shortly. We'll give Rich a minute. Jake, we are streaming and recording, so whenever you want to begin.
Okay, thank you Frank. We are waiting on one of our members, but Mark, if you'd like to get started, we do have a quorum.
Okay, let's call the meeting to order. Let's see. Mark Klecker here, Richard Speicher.
Not present yet.
Armin Shemany?
Armin is here.
Tony wasn't gonna be here, and I see Jason. Okay, everybody get the minutes from last last meeting, so any any omissions or corrections for those for last month's meetings or minutes?
Well, they look good to me.
Okay.
Okay, that sounds like a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, all right. Okay. Jake, you want to take over here for this?
Sure. Thank you. Yeah, next up's review of an application for construction of of three three-story townhouse buildings, which are going to total 12 units. And this is located at 102 Poplar. In a waterfront residential district, so it's subject to the waterfront conditional use approval process. We do have Philip and Raphael here, and I'm putting them in the room so that they can speak to the project. The project was reviewed by the design review committee June 2nd, I believe. And I forwarded the design review committee's comments to the planning commission members earlier today for reference.
Yep.
With that, I can open that up to open that up to Philip and Raphael to to go through the presentation.
Sure. I'm gonna, I'll give the presentation today. My name is Philip Jesaway. I have a small property development firm called P Real Estate Holdings. And I'm originally from Erie, and I am interested in doing something with this particular mostly vacant lot in the Bayfront neighborhood. It, you know, there's a lot of vacant lots in this neighborhood that are have very good exposure to the lake and also exposure to the downtown area. It seems like an interesting place to do a townhouse development because with some involvement that I've had with the community over the last six to eight months has indicated that a lot of people want to see for sale housing in the neighborhood. And although I think Erie is a pretty challenging market to build new housing, there is a huge supply deficit of new housing in Erie right now. There's not a lot of listings on the market and not a lot of new housing pretty much anywhere in the country right now. So it seems as though this particular site has the ability because it's it it really has four sides to it or three, three open sides to it to do a townhouse community. What we're proposing is 12 townhouses with essentially three different pods of houses. One will have two. Another will have four, and then another will have, I believe, eight and
Six?
I beg your pardon?
Six?
Well, they it kind of goes around, it goes around the corner. So even though it's there. Let me just see something here. Oh, sorry, six. I'm sorry. Two, four and six. So and what we've tried to do is to give those a contextual architectural style. What we've seen represented in the neighborhood is a lot of colonial and what we call like American Gothic Gothic style. There's some sort of Cape Cod. And so what the architect has done is to try to use building materials and styles that are representative in the neighborhood and come up with something that is fresh and new and and original, but not so original as to conflict with the neighborhood. So and the other thing that he's attempted to do is we don't want this to look like somebody's doing a housing development and in the middle of a neighborhood where there's a historic context and it's been there for a very long time. So the architect has used a lot of different building materials and has created a different identity at each of the facades of the property. So along Second Street, the home facades are all clapboard. They are separated with something called Sushugi Ban, which is a charred wood that weathers very well. That's that's used in Japan quite a bit. That building material gives some variety to the facades. One of the facades along Second is a different color so that it doesn't feel too repetitive. And those homes have smaller window types because it's not really a view facade like like the lakeside would be. So there's a more traditional window articulation. And then because there's a public sidewalk, which will walk directly by those, each of the homes will have its own picketed yard. So it'll it'll have its own little private yard area. When you go on to the lakefront of the facade, we've incorporated brick. These homes will be a little larger and more high end. So brick has been incorporated into those homes. And then again, some color variety, a variety of different window types, including some very large bay windows looking out on the bay. And and also a combination of both traditional and modern elements. So that, you know, some of the reference to the neighborhood is maintained and, you know, some newer, more modern identity is infused into it. The idea would be that all of the homes would have underground or not underground ground floor parking garages, which would be accessed from the rear. That rear is entered off of Poplar Street because Poplar is directly across from an office building. And since it's the most commercial use of all the four facades, we felt that would be the most appropriate area to enter the park, enter and exit the parking lot. In addition, that that side of the building offers really good oblique views of the bay. So it gives the opportunity to have more windows and more corner, more corners on the various buildings on that side by breaking it up with the driveway. The interior courtyard is large enough to have a landscaping element in the middle, although we haven't indicated that yet. We're still in the process of not still in the process, just beginning the process of doing our utilities, site utilities. So to the extent that we can fit it, we will put a landscape element in the rear courtyard. But essentially that courtyard will be a like a portico share where people will drive in. And you'll be able to do a full turn inside of there. It's it's actually about 50 by 60 in the center. So it's good size. And then the parking lanes or the ending driving lane and the entry driving lane are both 25 feet and change. So generous for pull in and out parking. And and there is one of the buildings that does not have underground parking that is going to be accessed from the corner. That is that is home number
Yep.
10. Sorry, 11. That's at the corner of Second and Poplar. That will have a driveway that will be 15 feet from the corner. I've cleared this or checked with Erie DOT. And Erie DOT has a 15-foot regulation from the corner. So we're going to make it a single car garage because it doesn't really fit 15 feet from the corner with a double car garage. And we're finding that a lot of townhouse households, you know, Western PA, we're doing another similar project in Pittsburgh, are single car households. So this particular home will have a single car garage. There will also be three other homes with or four other homes with single car garages. So out of the 12 units, seven of them will have double car garage and five of them will have single car garage. One, two, three. Sorry, four of that, four of them will have single car garage. Eight of them will have double car garage. And in terms of, you know, materiality, we're essentially doing these with a horizontal clapboard finish. All of the porches, however, have this natural wood finish. So the homes are going to be either a great, like a charcoal gray or white. And then the ground floor porch entry will have a vertical natural wood, which has been stained either a white or it'll be a charred wood. And if you go to the very back of the presentation, you can see a selection of the materials. So the homes will not only have a feeling of a, you know, sort of a painted traditional colonial, but they'll also have this natural wood element at the ground floor. It'll go in a different direction. It'll be vertical instead of horizontal. And again, it'll give it some modernity. It'll give it a little bit of a rustic sort of natural character. And I think make them very distinctive from from some of the other properties. You know, in the neighborhood. Roofs will be shingled. We, as you can probably see, there's a variety of roof types. We've done a flat roof. We've done a hip roof on the corner and we've done peaked roof. And again, that is to give variety to the building types and and to what people see on the site so that it feels, you know, a little bit more like it's naturally evolved over time and it's not a you know, manufactured home development in the middle of a historic neighborhood.
Okay. Let's see. Anybody have any questions for him?
Couldn't get any front porches in. Actually, I know you said you were trying to match the context of the neighborhood. I live in this neighborhood. And I don't know what the heck you're talking about. But one thing I really appreciate about living in this neighborhood is that most of our houses are from portraits. All our neighbors can interact with each other, communicate with each other, eyes on the street.
This was like Every, every one of these homes has a front porch.
And I'm looking at the renderings and they're pretty tucked back in there.
Yeah, these, every home has a seven or eight foot by five foot front porch that that faces the street that faces their their front yards. I mean, the the issue, the issue for us with the with having a porch that extends from the building from a design standpoint is that it 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 shrinks the ability to have a normal sized home behind it. So if we were to have a porch that extended and push the whole home back.
It only shrinks your density.
Yeah, would it would shrink, it would shrink, it would shrink both. But the the depth on this particular site, it would be very hard to fit much if we had to do a large, a full-size porch and then push the homes back because
You're jamming a lot of units in here. I took issue with a poplar facade. Oh, my gosh, like how especially the north building. I can't imagine when I'm riding my bike at the end of the promenade that I have to look at that on a regular basis. Just a punch, couple punched windows and pretty much a blank gray facade.
Yeah.
I guess, I mean, it's already made through designer review board. I don't know how some of these do, but it's not not really our position to
Yeah, so this, one of the reasons that you don't have, so if you look at the north facade, the the building that's to the left of it, you know, has a fully articulated facade. The building that is to the right has a staircase that goes up on that side of the building. And so the staircase really doesn't have the opportunity for windows in it. So that really the whole center is where the staircase would normally be. So I agree with you. It is a more challenging facade to to find interest in.
And then I just, I don't understand this flat building component. It looks like a somebody's attempted like a church or school addition or something. I don't know. I can't say I'm excited about this project in my neighborhood that I actually live in.
And it's it's a design issue for you?
Yeah, I don't think it meets the context of neighborhood. Very much like one of your previous projects. I just, I don't, maybe it meets the hodgepodge criteria that we have going on on the bluff right now, which is a mix of inconsistent typologies, but
Is there a particular? Is there a particular design direction that the planning board?
The one, you, part of your, I like, well, you got started with the one component of the building. I think what's bothering me is just the mixed nature of your view A3 that I wish I could share with the audience, but that particular one, I don't know, contextually feels like it fits more scale. Again, I feel like you're missing front porches.
Talking that one, right? A3, you said?
Yeah, yeah, I think that is, I opened that up. I was like, oh, wow, this is going the right way. And then I started scrolling through and I got, I started cringing as I went further.
So and I guess the, on the other facade, which is the lakefront facade, is it, is it the flat roofs that you mainly object to? Does it the other homes? You know, do you feel that the brick is a, you know?
I don't, the brick doesn't bother me. I live in a brick home. No, it's just, it's too flat. It doesn't look, that that flat building doesn't look like it makes any sense there to me at all.
Okay, so you don't like the the flat roofs?
If I could go Mussolini on a whole bayfront, I'd be knocking down every, every flower building there. I just think when you're out in the water looking back at our skyline, I think what you've got going on and with your aesthetic in A3 really would be more appealing to me, but
Yeah. So one of the things I would say is that we've experienced, we experimented also with having, you know, it's we experimented with a hip roof. So the roof, do you see the roof type on the corner of A3?
Yeah.
So we experimented using that that type of a roof there. I mean, is that something that you feel would be more?
I think hips are more appropriate for the neighborhood than that, than the, in A4, your flat roof component there, I can think of a building in our neighborhood, which is a rectory to a church that it almost looks just, just like that, less the curtain wall. And you could tell it was one of those out of sequence additions, you know, 50 years after the original.
Right, right.
I don't know. I mean, I could we're not here to vote on aesthetics, though, I guess.
No, but I, we want to do a project that the community, you know, that the planning board likes and that the community likes. So we're, you know, we're, we're open to
I'd be, Mr. Speicher has joined us too. If he's a reviewer, I'd appreciate another architect's opinion.
Actually, if you want to go all the way down to A14, it looks to me like the elevation, the roof on the elevations is the hip roof. And maybe, maybe looking at that elevation, you feel different, a little differently about it. And it may be, you know.
I think you're better off selling me on the 3D than than the
Okay.
Those are my opinions.
Okay, are you able to, were you able to see A14?
Yeah, I can see it, yeah.
Okay.
Your voice is turned off.
Thank you.
Yep, go ahead.
No, I mean, we looked at it at the design review committee. I don't think there was you know, it is in most respects much different than the neighborhood in general. I mean, you have what are singles and duplexes for the most part. And so it is something this dense is going to be this is going to be different than the the neighborhood in any event. So we thought that the the variation that they tried was an attempt to break down the size of one whole big complex. Didn't have a huge, any problem with that.
I don't think the scale bothers me. I think having the extra story of height on the bluff, we've already kind of set that precedent in motion, so I'm just thinking the poplar view that that corner just kind of really rubs me the I was thinking that is where the, unfortunately, that's where the promenade ends right now. Hopefully it continues in front of your property someday. Those are the views I'd be most concerned with.
On that A5?
A5, and then if you're, I guess, is there another one coming from? I guess there isn't one in there where if you're coming from the other angle on on front. Like, what's that look like? Yeah, that court, that corner, that tucked back thing. So hopefully someday it's our master plan for somebody to continue the promenade and loop that around. That front street should disappear, right? Somebody needs to be thinking about this because it looks like an unfinished thought, right? And it happens right here at this intersection.
Are you talking about the the flat roof one?
Yeah, you know, I'm talking about, so yeah, the flat roof, but when I'm thinking long term.
Right.
Imagine front street's not there because it shouldn't be because the the promenade project should be picked up and continued. The promenade ends right at this intersection.
Right.
So long term, somebody should be pushing for that. And then what are those views pedestrian and bike? And this should be a tourist attraction that we're, that we push people to go up on our bluff and experience the amazing views we have of our bay and our peninsula is one of the best parts in town. When you drive a car over here on Front Street, I'm sure Mr. Jesus has seen that there, people just go park there all the time and hang out. We're enjoying the view or whatever. I think from a planning commission perspective, we should be pushing for that. And I don't think that's irrelevant. I think it's not entirely relevant to this approval to be discussing it. Those are just my, my thoughts on
I, I would agree with you that the promenade ought to continue. I mean, that, that is, I mean, as near as I can tell, this, where it ends is planning by grant applications, you know, they could get money to go that far and no one was not part of a desire to approach looking at the whole bayfront or having a strategy to require funding to come, to continue it. That's not that's not a defect in this project.
No, I know. I'm just, it, it makes me think of if that ever does occur, what are those views that right now are strictly vehicular and someday hopefully are? I would like to see this be a tourist mecca that we encourage people that are staying at the hotels on the bayfront to go up and experience and enjoy our bluff. People do, they find, they find themselves jogging up there and then at this very intersection, they stop and like, where do we go?
But that has nothing to do with this.
I know, I know. Everybody's going to be stopping there and looking at this. My point is that this project is going to be, is going to be something that a lot of people see and experience and I think more long term than in the short term.
What we can do for you is, you know, I think that you know, I mean, I look at a lot of urban housing and, you know, where, where streets, where principal streets end and they go to side streets, you know, and there are two homes where the backyards connect. You know, there's often a different, you know, side, side of the house type of a facade, you know, where the principal facade is on the main street and then the house has a side. So when you go down a lot of side streets, you know, a lot of times the side of the house doesn't look as exciting as the front, you know, especially if it hasn't been designed as a, you know, quote unquote, corner property. But on this particular one, I think we'd be okay, you know, going back and looking again at that facade. I think we can, we can, if it's we can, we can, if it's something that the planning board finds offensive, we can certainly do a more thoughtful dispersion of the windows there. I mean, they're gonna wind up being in odd places for the interiors, you know, because the big challenge in doing a home is making the outside look cool and having the inside be a good experience as well, so that the windows are in the right place.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you on the, on the design challenges you got here, but I guess what my, my thought is, most of our neighborhood is symmetrical balanced facades, and I think you have that on the fronts. I think that just that one north component on the corner of Poplar, I feel like you, you didn't, you didn't execute like you did as well on the other.
I think we can go through there, and I think we can make that more symmetrical and less, you know, I mean, for example, th- this is also a concept, right? So, I don't know that, that when we're all, when we're finally done, I would feel comfortable having those front windows be so close to the corner, because they look too close to me. And so, I think there's a lot of proportionality that we can enhance, but we can also probably you know, add some more windows so that that facade is balanced out better, and I think, you know, we'd be okay exploring that with planning staff as we move forward.
I can appreciate that. I, I approve it otherwise. I, I think it's
So, that's what, that's what we're talking about then, just that Poplar Street side? That we need to come back and revisit.
Yeah, I don't want to reject this, I don't know if it, approve a contingent on we'll get to see some, a prettier picture.
Yeah. Yeah, I would ask that you let us, if it's okay with you, if you would let us develop that with, with planning staff, and then planning staff could communicate it to you, or we'd be happy to appear again, but you know, it would be a big back step.
Yeah.
Yeah, like I said, I don't want to hold you up at all, but some, some tweaks would be appreciated.
We want it to be a good looking project, so, you know, we haven't done a, a focus group, but you know, if, if the first person on the planning board says that they find it awful, you know, it, it's enough to make us want to put some more time and energy into it.
Thank you.
Okay, well, with that being said, I mean, other than that, I have no problems with this, so I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
And second? All right, all in favor?
Hi.
All right.
You have to note me as abstaining.
Well, well, hold on, we don't, we lost the where's Armand?
Hey Jake, you're, you're, there you go.
I, I have Armand on the phone. He, he lost power. So, I'm, we're talking right now, and so, it's, yeah, unfortunately, he couldn't, he couldn't reconnect through his phone, but I, but I'm on the phone with him right now. He's on speakerphone. We had a, a motion and a, and a second to approve the application or recommend approval to council?
Correct. And one abstain.
Okay, and then, Armand, how do you vote?
Yes, I vote to approve.
Okay, Armand votes to approve. Okay, so we, so we do still have, uh, uh, three yes votes and one abstain.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Armand.
Okay.
And I hope your power comes back on soon.
Thank you very much, Board. I appreciate it.
Not a problem. You have a good day.
Thank you.
Jake, you're back on mute. Unless that's on purpose. Okay. Well, I don't know what Jake's doing, but we're on to the Erie County Long, Long Range Transportation Plan.
Okay, my apologies, I was just, just wrapping up with, with Armand to see if he wanted to continue by, through the phone or, or log off, so. Thank you for your patience. Uh, we have Emily and, and Scott to speak on behalf of the transportation plan update that the county's undertaking right now. I'll, I'll open up the floor to both.
Hello, my name is Emily Aloys. I know, I know some of you already. I work for Erie County Planning and the MPO, and we are updating our Long Range Transportation Plan. So, it's a five year update. I know many of you have worked on this in years past. So, we just closed our round of public outreach, and I was just looking at our map for public comments, and I did see multiple comments that the promenade needs to be extended on the RWS Bayfront area. So, Jason, maybe you put those comments in, not sure, but they are in there, so the public has made that, that note in our plan. So, to talk about some specifics and get your input, I'll turn this over to the county's consultant, WRA, which is Scott Thompson Graves, to go through some of the details of the update.
Emily, and thanks for, thanks for your time to meet with you guys today. So, a few ways that, I guess, where, where we are in the Long Range Transportation Plan is, as Emily said, we're kind of wrapping up the initial round of public outreach. We're trying to solicit feedback on the plan. So, what the plan does, for those of you who aren't familiar with it, is it helps guide the investment in transportation funding on federally aided highways or roadways, you know, throughout the Erie County region. In addition, you know, as part of the plan, we've been tracking and making note of transportation improvements that are needed also on local roadways, so they could be used for grant applications and things like that, because what we found over time is that if we just, you know, solicit feedback on federally aided highways, you know, within the region, we end up losing sight of good and valid comments that we get from the public on the non federally aided highway system. So, we've been tracking that as well and keeping, keeping that up to date in the plan. So, one of the things we're doing is we're trying to develop a plan that would meet Erie County's needs through 2050. So, we're looking at, you know, the way the area has developed in the past, how it's developing in the future. We thought it'd be a good opportunity to talk to you guys about how you've seen development occur in the last five years, what types of development you see moving forward. You know, are there areas in the city that you guys are trying to encourage development or redevelopment? Are there locations that, you know, that you guys are using LERTA or other mechanisms in order to try to encourage development? Um, we can use all of that information as we try to prioritize projects moving forward. You know, in that we can note that, you know, there's a, perhaps a transportation improvement has been suggested or called for that would help encourage economic development. We also are happy to take additional feedbacks such as extending the promenade and making sure that we've, we've tracked those as, as well. I guess with that, you know, I'd like to get you guys' feedback on things. What have you seen in the past? What do you see going forward? Or would you like to encourage transportation investment? It would be consistent with your, your plans. I, I know Jake's very familiar with this, so he, he can, he can get you guys started maybe if, if you guys need help.
Well, this is Rich Spiker.
Familiar with that update process, and, and yeah, it is, it is kind of a federally mandated process, but it's, it, it obviously encompasses multimodal planning, so things like the promenade are important things for the county to be aware of and to, and to plug in, so. I, I think Kathy was also gonna make some comments as well, but yeah. Open it up to the members.
Uh, this is Rich Spiker. And perhaps it's baked into the process, I, I don't know that, those details, but there seems to be way more attention focused on vehicular transportation needs at the expense of more multimodal things. Pedestrian movement, public transit, accommodation, bicycle pathways, which I know the city has some work going on, and I, and I just think that there are other things that make would make Erie a, a better and more attractive place to reside and to get around than, you know, working on widening some street or increasing traffic traffic capacity at the expense of, of other kinds of movement.
Yeah, any, any specific areas that you'd like to see enhanced?
Well, you know, as Jason brought up, the bayfront promenade, things along the bayfront that have been talked about, whether it's the top of the bluff and, and enhancing that as a tourist attraction and people moving, the ability to move down the bluff and across the bayfront highway, which with the proposed expansion is only going to be more difficult at those few places where they do come together. You know, I, I think those are extending it to the east side. I mean, it, it becomes different in nature, but as a way of moving through close in neighbor downtown neighborhoods, that represents a lot of opportunity to talk about the history and growth of Erie, the people who built it and how it's evolved over the years. So, I think there's a lot of, and there's a lot of history on both sides of the neighborhood that could be brought out and, and help with the growth of tourism in Erie, which is a, an important aspect of our economy. You know, there is sometime, some years ago, the city did a plan to look at the streetscaping and how to improve the streets to improve walkability, you know, reducing lane, lane widths, planting trees, curb bump outs, segregating certain kinds of traffic or providing appropriate facilities for them that got off to a start and, and has gone nowhere since. It has a master plan that is honored more in the breach than any action to implement. So, you know, we're a great place for making a plan and then putting it on the shelf. People could look at it and say, look, we have a plan. But nothing ever happens, happens on a continual basis.
That's my planning.
Yeah.
I agree with everything Rich has said. I think everybody should be anticipating and planning for in September when the new, when the 2020 census data comes out, that we're gonna be in an unfortunate scenario where we'll be confirmed we're below a hundred thousand people, and that trend is gonna continue. So, I think we should be looking at how, we don't, we don't need more roads, we need less roads, but could, can they become better quality at the same time? Um, I think the more that, that we see population contract in Erie County, we should be working towards adding more livability type amenities and I know there's other plans, obviously, for bike lanes and all that intermodal stuff everywhere, but like the, the road diet, urban planning terminology, that is a good fad to, to jump on to.
So, I'll jump in here now. Sorry, you don't get to see my face today just because I had to use my desktop, so. I don't have a camera, so I have to make do. Can everyone hear me okay? Seems like you looked, okay, great. Um, so I, I agree with everything that was said, except I can tell you every plan I've made does not sit on a shelf. It might sit on my desk, but it's, I haven't put it, I haven't given up on it so much that I've put it on a shelf yet. But, uh, and I, and just from my experience, I think the, the roadblock in getting these plans, grand plans into some form of action actually not only relies on funding, I think that's sort of an afterthought, but it relies in the lack of policy. And our most recent occurrence of, of that situation is our active transportation plan, Active Erie, which Jason, you were on the steering committee, weren't you? You were on that steering, no? I thought someone from Planning Commission was.
How many of you meetings?
Yeah, so, and here's, I just, I'm gonna tell this story and then so you can kind of understand what happened is there, at the beginning of that process, typically the client, this community would have adopted a complete streets policy, which is essentially how do the departments and decision makers who impact what our roads look like, how they function, when they get paved? So, in our, in our, in the city of Erie, that's Public Works, in other cities, it could be a different department, a streets department, something like that. But the policy that would have been in place is how do they make those decisions? When they're making a decision on funding to pave roads, to fix sidewalks, when do we start thinking about, does this road need a bike lane? Does it need better sidewalks? Is there a separated bike facility? Like, it just is a policy of what that process is, and that's a complete streets policy in its very basic form. Having something like that in place certainly would have helped, I think, inform the rest of the plan. I think the plan, though, i- i- is very good, and it, it is definitely not sitting on the shelf. Leanne has got five significant projects of that plan funded and underway, so it is a plan that was in motion before it was adopted. But this simple discussion about policy was very foreign, foreign to the administration and having an open process. And that's really what needs to change, it's a cultural change. So, policy, in your example, Rich, policy should have come right after the downtown streetscape master plan and said, okay, how will we make sure that this? And it's not, God forbid, it's not a task force. If, if the plan's done and says, well, you need to create an implementation task force, you might as well put that sucker on a shelf, because it's not gonna happen. It is, it has to be policy enacted, and then those people who work in City Hall have to be held accountable for following that policy, because we know there's not a big check at the end of a plan, so it's not gonna happen overnight. So, it, it's really changing the culture and the decision making moving forward. And I say this, and I think it's important, even though we're talking about, you know, what will influence PennDOT and federal funding, because in the scenario I was talking about with the active transportation plan, we're still struggling, we still need a complete streets policy. It was, it was tried at the beginning of, of the planning process, and it was dead on arrival. So, we absolutely have to take that back up. But, there was a question, there was a PennDOT project on, I, I want to, I'm, I'm trying to remember. I think it was Thirty-Eighth Street, there, maybe there was something recently done, Emily. Leanne was more a part of it, and she said, no, it was Twenty-Sixth Street. She said, Leanne's like, how do we get PennDOT to, to look at, at sidewalk and bike lane improvements for Twenty-Sixth Street? Can we use the active transportation plan? I said, well, we could, but it's not, like, that's not a route. But if we had a complete streets policy that says, here is the decision, here's how, here's how the city will make a decision, and therefore PennDOT, here's how you should make that decision, we could have applied the policy to a PennDOT project. And it didn't have to be. So, it didn't have to be so specific that it was in our plan or it was not in our plan if we hadn't thought about it. So. My, I'll get off my soapbox. It, I think that everything that people are concerned about, it has less to do with money and it has more to do. With policy and decision making at the local government level that we can then. Make decisions by PennDOT on, on future projects. That's all I have to say.
I appreciate, yeah, sorry. I appreciate the, the difficulty of changing a culture. To advance what. I think needs to happen in the city, not necessarily in a. Small focus, but in a, in a bigger focus to, to guide. People and there. I'm sure many people in City Hall, not if you can go back. Who like it just the way it is because. They get to do what they want and make the decision the way they want and, and it's easy for them. You know, one of the things that, that, how much I'd heard about the curb bump outs on State Street, you know, Upper State Street. Middle State Street really was that. The streets department didn't like them because they had to. Had to go in and out. Because they just couldn't run a straight line and, and cloud the street. Well. I, that's certainly something to consider. But it ought not drive. All the decision making. And I think that's what happens too often. So how do we advance, how do we help advance the policies? And I, we're way off the subject, but.
Well, that's a great question, Rich. Planning Commission essentially represents the city's citizen planners and should be advisors to city council. So. I think you absolutely can advocate for implementation of the Active Erie Plan where a complete streets policy. Is priority number one. We talked about in your work plan, a capital improvement plan program that doesn't. That is absolutely something the planning commission advocate for. You're really not, not meant to be a reactionary board as much as you are to be a proactive board. Because planning is in your name and proact, planning is proactive. So that's a, that's a great question. You. Again, there's not really a protocol for what you just said, but you certainly can. Make it, not make it up, but you can create one. How do you want to move and communicate to city council that you're ready to take? A lot more involvement in implementing the plans that have been. Come before you and adopt it. I mean, you've seen all the plans I'm talking about.
Yep, yeah. And I, I would say. You've been an exception to most of what has gone on in, in the past. I think that. Some administrations were happy that we were simply a reactive board and only dealt with something that came in front of us. As a referral or. They needed an approval for. To comply with a grant program or, or something like that. So I. That would be a great way to change. I think we ought to talk about that. At an upcoming meeting. How to move forward.
So I'll, I'll make it easy for you. We'll put the draft complete streets policy that we started with. A year ago, we'll put it on your agenda and take.
Yeah. That would, that would be a good place to start.
Start writing legislation, Rich. I'm all about it.
In a face to face meeting.
In a face.
I'll be, you don't want to see me today. It's been rough. No, that's right, Mark. We should talk about that too. The face to face meetings. I'm sorry. Yeah, we'll do that after Scott and Emily are done with this.
No, I think that, that, well. Talk about that later. Sorry to hijack your. Discussion.
Anything else you guys would like to share for us with the plan? We can put a recommendation in the plan. That would, you know, encourage the adoption of policies to support higher and ongoing planning efforts.
Yes, please.
Yeah, that would be valuable.
Complete streets policy, Scott, and, and a capital improvement program. Five year capital improvement program would be great additions.
I can tell you that. The city of Pittsburgh goes a long way towards a compelling PennDOT to include sidewalks and things by citing a. I think it's a 1930s ordinance. That they adopted. In order to, you know, require PennDOT to include sidewalks or. You know, reduce their ability to narrow sidewalks.
Well, the, I, I was doing some research not too long ago. I saw the city of Lancaster amended their SADO. To their subdivision land development to include their active transportation planning recommendations. So it's physically in their, in their SADO for any land development proposal and subdivision. That might be where we want to look at too, Rich.
Salzo?
Yeah.
That's been talked about. Reconsidering or modifying that. So, yeah.
Yeah, well, we're probably going to amend it for like pre-application reviews. But I think we could, if we're going to open it up, might as well use that as our complete streets. The way that earmark streets review. As one way, I think. Unless Scott, you have some other recommendations.
No, I mean, I think the SADO, I'll look at what Lancaster did, but I think that might be a good, a good location for it. I guess. With that, I guess I could say thanks, everybody, for your time. If anything, if anything comes up, or if there's anything else you guys would like to share. We'd be happy to. Happy to include it in our consideration for our planning process and thanks for your time today.
Right, thank you. Thank you.
Scott. And Emily, sorry. I said, thank you, Emily.
Oh, thank, thank you, Kathy.
Thanks, Scott and Emily. That's, you know, obviously if. As things move forward, you know, I mean. What is the process moving forward timeframe wise? To continue to accept comments and things of that nature.
Well, you know, we'll continue to accept comments and I guess I'd say, you know, going from comments into feedback mode here. Over the summer, we're working on starting to, starting to develop our project lists. You know, that might be something that, you know, we want to share with you guys. As we go forward so you guys can see what some of the. Comments or suggestions were within the city. So, you know, looking at doing, you know, going from making the project list, going through the project prioritization and. Ultimately having an adopted plan in February, right, Emily?
Actually, March. So March 2022. The MPO will adopt the 2050 long range transportation plan. So it sounds like a long time, but I'm sure it'll go quite quickly here.
Yep, it'll be a pretty rapid fire now. All right. Well, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comment before, you know, we talk about next meeting and where we're meeting? Do we do that first? Anybody on there?
I don't see any additional folks. For public comment.
Kathy, when we get to be able to start meeting in person?
I, we can, I, we can start next month. It will need to be held in city council chambers. And it will be a. Hybrid meeting. So. I, I honestly don't know if there's training that needs to be involved, how much prep time, because there will be monitors. I mean, it's, it's. It's a whole new world down in the city council chambers right now. They've had a lot more equipment to handle. This, but the. Yeah. So I think we just have to be prepared and work on, work with Frank. To get it up and running. I don't know. Frank, are you, are you watching this right now? Can you hop on the call? Or the.
I am here, but I did not hear the question.
We're, we're talking about what I was going off about this morning about the new, the public meetings. Planning Commission, you know, probably should be meeting in person starting next month. I, I, I'm thinking that it's best to have them in, in council chambers just for ease of access if the public wants to show up. Because they, the planning commission will tend to get more public participation than, than other boards. Zoning hearing boards, one that will definitely need to be in the chambers, but that's how it was. How much lead time? So this will be the first time that members. Commissioners will have. An opportunity to sit in chambers and get accustomed to it. But is there any training that, that needs to happen for, for people who haven't actually held a meeting down there yet?
No, you'll just have to come in and sit down and conduct your meeting and I'll do all the backend stuff.
And right now there's monitors at each seat?
Yes, there are computers at each seat. So if you would like to log into. The Zoom and say someone has a presentation, you can see it up close. We'll also have a, a big screen TV monitor down there. And then, of course, the projectors that are dual projecting so those in the audience can see as well. Other than that, if any of the members of the commission would like to come in and check out the improvements in council chambers. You're more than welcome to attend the mayor's press conference on Thursday or. Reach out to Jake or myself and we can show you around and show you where you could sit and show you how a meeting can run. And that's about it, Kath. I don't think I have anything else.
Do they need to have their own headphones?
They don't, you don't need to. No, I can, I can sanitize the headphones that are up there. If you're more comfortable bringing your own headphones. Just make sure they have an eighth inch adapter at the end of them and not Bluetooth headphones will not work.
Okay, what are the headphones for? I mean, other than I know what headphones are for, but why would we need headphones?
So those who will be on Zoom.
Okay.
You just might be able to hear them better through headphones.
I got you.
Yeah, I'll have them piped in through the, the regular PA that's in the council chambers, but just, we have some. Little hard of hearing people in depth, different boards and commissions. So I, I just have a headphone. If you need headphones, bring your own headphones kind of thing.
But you said Bluetooth won't work, so.
Yeah, Bluetooth, yeah, because.
You gotta be able to plug in?
Yep, you gotta be able to plug in. And I have all the adapters that you would need as long as you have a regular pair of headphones.
Okay.
Okay, so Frank, as they, since we're under the new security protocol, they come into the building. Can they just walk right into the chamber, council chambers, or do they have to be escorted from the entrance into chambers? I thought it was, they could just walk right in.
It's my understanding for a public meeting, yes, once they go through security, they can enter the, enter the chambers.
Okay. And the reason I'm asking, Mark, is because there's, I'm just a little, I'm a little confused about the product, the logistics. If we're holding it in room 500, a meeting, no matter if it's public, if it's a planning commission. Because you can't, you can no longer as a member of the public, just walk freely in, in the building. You have to be escorted. So the logistics of trying to hold a meeting in room 500 with multiple people coming in at different times. Is. What, it just doesn't work. And I've been wanting to move planning commission down to chamber, council chambers anyway. So this isn't really the issue, but some of the other meetings that we're, that we typically host in room 500. Where you can get one or two members of the public, you get members or the board members themselves come in at different times. The logistics of having to escort 10 people at different times in the building is just something I don't want to deal with either. Anyway, so I think, I think we got it figured out. We just, we can have it. At, in council chambers. And then it's hybrid, so people can choose if they want to show up or if they want to zoom in.
And Jake, you'll have to reflect that change in the advertisement in the newspaper.
Yes.
And I'm assuming we come in off the state?
Yeah, that's the only entrance that's open.
Okay.
You can get out any door, you just can't get in except state, so.
Sounds good. We have any other business, any, any new business? Do I? Do I hear anybody wanting to? Make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. Well, great. We'll see everybody, see everybody next month in person.
Great. Look forward to it.
Sounds good.
And we have had meetings in council before. Remember, a couple of years ago, we did.
Yeah.
I, I wasn't worried about that. I was just, it's a different world now.
Yeah.
Getting in and out of the building. Wanted everyone to be prepared. If they show up, you might want to show up a little early, get accustomed to the layout.
So, so Rich can't show up at like 101 type of stuff?
Hey.
Well, he can, it's just going to be a little more disruptive than just him plugging into the.
I'll make sure I zoom in right on him as he's walking through the.
Of course, I'll be there at 12:30, so.
Yeah. I would have to learn to do that.
All right. Well, hey, good seeing everybody.
Yep. See ya.
Take it easy.
Thanks, everybody.